We'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone for coming for our meeting today. First, I want to have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, we'd like to welcome everyone present this evening. We will now have roll call.
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphreys.
Present.
Brenda Jones. Wanda Brown-McPage.
Present.
Aldean Yu-Wen.
Present.
Present.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Madam President, before we have that, I have a motion to add an executive session for personnel. And when we get to that, Susan will have the exact language.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the regular what?
You have to have a second of my motion.
Second on that motion.
Thank you. We have had a motion to add an executive session for personnel. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any noes? Thank you. We will have a motion to add an executive session for personnel that's added to the agenda. We will now have community comment. And before we...
Approve the regular agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to have approval of our regular agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the regular agenda in addition to the executive session that we just approved.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We will approve the regular agenda with the addition of a motion having an executive session of personnel. Thank you. We will now have community comment. And that will first come from the Good News Club. But before we do that, I want to go over with you, please, the standards and policies of which we're going to be asking those people to come and do their presentations. First of all, we want to make sure that we all listen attentively to those things that are going to be said. The speaker, when they come forward, must give their name, their addresses, and their telephone numbers will be recorded on the roll to be maintained by our board clerk. Speakers must limit their comments to at least three minutes and which may include questions by the board. Speakers are going to be timed and advised when their time has expired. Extensions may be granted upon by the majority vote of the board. They can only address the board about policy-related issues and general community concerns. We are asking that there would be no derogatory remarks or critical remarks about district personnel or students. And therefore, we want to make sure that these are... the information is confidential and must be presented in appropriate... at an appropriate way. These are... if you have complaints about anything and grievances, the procedures which are designated will be addressed accordingly to what we want to do. Speakers wishing to submit written materials to supplement the remarks should make at least 12 copies for proper distribution. And if there is hot issues, speakers will be encouraged not to duplicate the remarks of others. Instead, they should seek to introduce new points and/or perspectives so that everyone's concerns may be heard. If a person wishes to discuss a topic which is already on the board agenda, the speaker's comments will be deferred until that item is called for discussion. The speaker will be permitted to commit as determined by the board president or presiding officer, and the speaker must adhere to a three-minute time limit. And with that being said, we will now have Kristy Heath, who is going to talk to us about the Good News Clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kristy Heath, and my address is P.O. Box 561, Grandview, Missouri, 64030, 816-358-1138. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board and Dr. Faust. My name again is Kristy Heath, and I and those with me represent the weekly Good News Clubs that have been held in the district since 2005. Last school year, more than 750 children attended Good News Clubs at 17 of your elementary schools. These clubs were staffed by 130 volunteers from at least 17 local churches. They serve your schools with excellence and great care, and I would like to ask all of our volunteers to please stand. Recently, we were informed that the district plans to charge facility usage fees at the rate of $125.40 per club per month. In the past, we have always been allowed to meet at no charge. Tonight, we humbly ask the board to consider removing these fees for the following reasons. First, we are nonprofit, volunteer-based, and do not charge any fees to the families for their children to participate. No donations are solicited. Therefore, the clubs generate no income with which to pay these fees. At minimum, these new fees would triple the monthly expense to operate each Good News Club, presenting a serious financial hardship that could result in the cancellation of many or all of the clubs. Second, our club volunteers and participating families are taxpaying citizens from Wyandotte County who already support your schools both financially and with their personal time. Many of our volunteers go beyond their regular service in Good News Club by also helping to provide gifts of school supplies for the children, care baskets for needy families, special items for teachers and office staff, and much more. Third, the Good News Club helps to support and enhance the district's critical mission of character education by consistently teaching good character qualities. Several parents, principals, and teachers tell us that they have seen positive behavioral, social, and academic changes in many children who attend club. In the packet of information you will receive, we have proposed an alternative payment plan in lieu of the facility usage fees. This is based on the financial benefits and services that the Good News Clubs provide to your district. The value far exceeds the amount the district plans to charge. We ask that you approve this plan, taking effect September 9th for this school year and into the future. We sincerely desire to hold Good News Clubs in your district as before, to continue a valuable partnership with you, to make a positive and lasting difference in the lives of hundreds of families and children. This is so greatly needed. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. And we have some packets of information to give to you about this plan for you to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say we appreciate each and every one of you coming and supporting our students because we do believe in making sure that they work toward achievement for success. And the fact that you have diligently put forth the time and effort to do this, it is greatly appreciated. At one point, I was one of the volunteers who worked with Good News Club.
Yes.
So, thank you so much.
Mrs. Drew. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. At this particular time, we will have a bond update coming from Mr. Dennis Covington.
Excuse me. I should've said something sooner. I know we can't respond right now, but will somebody at least give them a timeframe in which we'll comment or get back to?
That's a board policy.
Okay.
Okay. We will address it, and then we'll set aside a time, and we will make sure that you do get an adequate amount of a response before... and if it's with everyone's approval who is a part of the board before September the 9th. Is that acceptable to the board? Is there anyone who is opposed to that? Okay. Thank you. We'll have an answer to you prior to September the 9th. Thank you so much. We appreciate each of you all coming and supporting to make sure that this endeavor continues. Thank you. Mr. Covington. Wanda. Wanda, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, we might get back to you.
Well, I assume that within a 10-day period. I assume that it was within a 10-day period that it would take place.
Maybe at the calendar section of tonight you consent. Yeah. Or a special. A special.
Madam President, Board, Superintendent, we've done a lot of work over the summer. A lot of schools had a lot of work done to them, and I would like to publicly thank J. Dunn for all the hard work that they and their crews done over the summer. And we have Lee with us tonight that'll bring you the bond update.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Madam President, Board, Dr. Faust, good evening. Thank you. Lee Moore.
Good evening.
So, as Dennis mentioned, a lot of great news to share. We turned over 13 projects the last month. So, a lot of these will be pretty quick, just kind of some highlight pictures of what we did. I'll start with F.L. Schlegel High School Renovations. So, we did some science classrooms and a new administration area and entrance. And so, you can see there on the pictures. And that one got turned over for the start of school. The next one is a project we still have underway. That was a phased project, J.C. Harmon. Over the summer, we finished Phase 1 of the administration area and science classroom remodels, which we failed to put any pictures on here. But what we do show you is we're starting to put a new skin on the front of the building. As you can see, we've taken off pretty much all of the old stuff. And this next month, you'll start seeing some curtain wall and storefront go back up, and that'll be a December turnover. That will also include a few conference rooms and the new reception area and entrance for that Phase 2 of the administration area. So, looking good there. Could use a little bit of good weather on that one. Washington High School, a two-phased project. So, we did half of the total replumb of the... half of the building, total replumb, finished that up, and then we did a new total gut and remodel of the administration area and secure entrance. You see there's some new pictures of your new entrance and admin area. So, pretty much wrapping up till next summer, and we'll do... we have science classrooms next summer, and then also Phase 2 of the total replumb. Next project is John Fisk Elementary. So, as you know, we did a gym, cafeteria, classroom addition, and also remodeled the existing gym into some classroom space. So, all of that work was completed, and you'll see there some of the finishes... finished pictures. Turned out to be a really nice-looking gym and classroom spaces. Next project is Bannaker Elementary School, and there we did a little bit of an admin remodel and secure entrance. So, you can again see there, finishes turned out really nice. Next one is Carruthers Elementary School. That is Eric Floyd with J. Dunn. And we like to have fun. We did a tour towards the end of the summer, and this was the only picture I had of the mascot, and I wanted to make sure you guys saw that. Eric will kill me when he sees this. But he let me take the picture, so... But this was a remodel. If you look at the side picture, we actually built a new canopy over it, redid some ADA sidewalk, actually put up some new handrail around there and some fencing. So, kind of hard to tell, but that's the blue and yellow columns there in the background. And then again, some remodel of the addition... of the admin space and secure entrance there. Next up is Quindero Elementary School, and got a nice shot of the new mascot there. And that was administration and remodel, new reception desk, and secure entrance. Douglas Elementary is the next project we worked on. We actually put a new kitchen space into this facility and then did a little bit of... used some existing stage wood floor to create the... a little display area there on the bottom left-hand corner. So, that's the extent of that project. Next up is Emmy Pearson. Again, some new secure entrance there, slide office remodel, new reception desk, and got some colorful there. So, got that one completed. And last, but not least, of the summer projects of the elementary schools is Whittier Elementary. And we just did a little bit of hardware revisions on that one in order to provide a secure entrance. Next up is Wellborn. I understand your next board meeting's out there, so excited for you guys to see that if you haven't already. So, brand-new elementary school. Got that turned over, some really nice pictures from the inside and outside there. So, anyway, excited for you guys to see that in a couple of weeks. Next up, Glory Willis. So, that's our brand-new middle school on the Coronado site. So, you see there a picture of the first day of school. A little cloudy that day, but we just barely missed the rain with that picture. But exciting project. We're still actually... this month... this September, we'll be wrapping up seed, get into the seeding season as once it starts cooling down a little bit. So, you still see some dirt out there, but that'll be covered up here shortly. And then we want a little bit of rain, just to kind of help the seed, but not a lot. And then you can see some nice pictures of the inside and graphics. Now, we've got a new... we've got a new elementary under construction, West Park. So, this is the spot of the old West Middle School. So, you'll see there, we're finished wrapping up footings, slab-on-grade this month. We're starting to fabricate structural precast up in Omaha, I believe. And then in September, we'll start... you'll start seeing steel come up, so it'll start looking like a building. You can see there the mock-up of the precast, so some nice... some nice colors there on the mock-up. And start seeing some masonry next month as well. And that'll be turnover of next summer. Couple more left here. We've got Carl B. Bruce. So, this is the new middle school just south of the north... existing Northwest Middle School. Full building replacement there. So, as you can see, we've got a lot of steel going in the air. We'll be working on some second-floor slab pores. And next month, continue with steel, slab pores, masonry walls. And October, actually, we'll start seeing precast, so that'll start... it already looks like a building with the steel, but the precast helps. Last but not least is Rosedale Middle School. That was a job we finished up this summer as well. You've got a new cafeteria and kitchen addition, as well as some nice remodeled space for a new administration area and some career exploration classrooms up on the third floor of the existing facility and a weight room. So, anyway, there's some pictures of the finishes. Again, turned out to be a really nice space. We also replaced plumbing fixtures. You see a new sink there in one of the existing bathrooms. So, that concludes my project updates, and I promise next month will be a little bit shorter, and we'll only have a few to talk about. But pretty exciting summer. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On your... the new school site, the West Park, I think, I think I asked you before about the well on the property, and you were going to get back to me and let me know the status of that.
Yeah, I believe that was on Lowell Varone, and that was not considered a well.
Okay.
We talked about... cistern, yeah. It was deemed a cistern.
Okay. Did it have to be closed?
They did fill it up, yes.
Okay.
But it didn't have the same... I think the wells have a little more regulatory requirements.
Okay.
Which is probably why you asked the question.
Okay.
But it was not deemed a well.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments?
It looks beautiful.
Thank you.
They all look beautiful. I got a sneak peek at Harmon's the other day, and you preserved the mural very nicely, which was a concern of some of the alumni. And I just couldn't believe that was the same office space that I had seen for the past 30 years. You guys have done a marvelous job of making everything look like it belongs. And that's what I think is important, is that it looks natural, it looks like it belonged, it was there to begin with. Well, thank you very much.
And I'll make sure and pass that on to the architects. Obviously, they had a big hand in what they... what it looks like. So, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
You have two other attachments. They're pretty self-explanatory, but you want to address them?
Yes, yeah. We're done with the updates. So, the next up is our total budget tracking report that we provide each month. So, just a few stats for you. Through the end of July, we've put $109 million of the bond issue and hard construction costs in place, and that's about 60%. So, we're going to obviously be up over that through August, but that was through our July numbers. So, the biggest change here is our savings to the project. So, last month, we were showing about $1.5 million, so we've about doubled that, starting to recognize some contingency savings from the projects this summer and the two elementary schools. So, again, money that is able to be put back into the bond issue for some other needs. So, other than that, and just the updates on the percentages, that's pretty much it. I know Doug and our crew are going to be going through all of the abatement and architect and all the soft costs, and then have that updated for the next board meeting.
Your $2 million savings, does that include or not include the cost overruns?
It's $3 million of savings. We have one project that had some cost overruns. Are you talking about after... GMP overruns, or?
Well, overruns.
Yeah, yeah. So, everything's absorbed into that.
So, how current is this date? Is this figure?
Very current.
What's a very current?
Like last week.
Okay. So, does it include the cost overruns that you know we're going to discuss this evening, or does it not?
I believe that's a different project. That's not included in the bond issue.
So, that's not... okay.
Correct. Any questions on the budget tracking update?
What did you just say? That it doesn't... it's not including the bond?
Do you want to...
You may be referencing the central kitchen project, which is not a bond project, which is the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
And to clarify, it said updated August 22nd on our report. So, I'm assuming that's the last day it was... it was updated... it's the date on our report.
Yeah, that should be last...
It said August 22nd.
Well, you're just a little... little wavy on the "should," so I just...
I didn't. I didn't. I'm sorry, but I...
Okay.
Yeah, we updated it last week.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Last attachment, I was asked to provide a calendar of our upcoming outreach and inclusion events. So, we actually provided the last school year of events. So, we started in May of 2018 and just kind of showed you our events. And if you want to go to the back, which is the second page, we just attended Mountain Plains Minority Supplier Development Council Business Opportunity Exchange yesterday. We had a booth there, and we're able to meet some small businesses. And then upcoming, we got a pretty busy September. The Hispanic Contractors Association is hosting an inclusion event. If you go to the next page, page 2, the bottom there, there you go. So, on September 11th, we're having a meeting with the Hispanic Contractors Association to talk about the projects we've got coming up to bid. We've got a small business event there on the 18th of September with USDOT, and then our J. Dunn quarterly meeting towards the end of September there on the 26th. We also have two projects coming out to bid, Work Package 16A and B, and then also Work Packages 11A and B. We'll have newspaper advertisements. Those are the projects we'll be talking about at these events. And then our next Economic Inclusion Committee meeting, which is a quarterly meeting, is slated for October 9th here at this facility. So...
I have a question. When you have the inclusion meetings, do they ever get a report back? Like, how many companies actually got a chance to participate and actually get a contract? You know, we always hear about the meetings, and I've gone to some, and I've seen a lot of people, and everybody's networking. But when I've also talked to other people, they're not pleased because they don't always seem to have an opportunity to get a bid or to get something, and you never hear a lot of the success stories. So, is it possible to get something where we can see that maybe a few people got an opportunity?
Well, Marvin here is with Mountain Plains, and he ran the organization... the event yesterday. So, he may be able to speak to the tracking of who comes to that event. I know that we take some names and reach out to them and see if there's an opportunity with some of these projects coming up. I don't have any specific lists with me, and I don't know if you want to respond to that question.
Sure.
About the... just the list of people attending.
Sure. Marvin Lyman with the Mountain Plains Minority Supplier Development Council. We are a corporate member-based organization, and we certify ethnic minority-owned business enterprises. They must be 51% owned and controlled by an American ethnic minority. We've been participating in the EIC for, oh my gosh, the last... at least the last 12 months or more, actually, the last two years, just about. Any event, we have great participation in the EIC when it comes to other organizations such as the Heartland Black Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Contractors Association, and many others. And what I can tell you is that we ask a lot of tough questions. And the folks that are here, representing J. Dunn, as well as the superintendent who attends those meetings as well, they make sure that they get that information to us. So, we're wanting to know who is actually getting the contracts and participating. I can tell you that they do an excellent job of making sure that there's participation, they're rightsizing contracts, so that contractors... you know, it's one thing to say you have a $10 million line item for a scope of work, but it's another thing to be able to rightsize that contract for a contractor who is not able to perform that $10 million scope of work, but you make sure that they are included. And so, you have a lot of activities like that that are taking place with the J. Dunn team and making sure that there's participation across the board.
And I guess my concern... I'd just like to hear a few success stories. You know, I see the people there, and they're excited, and I appreciate that J. Dunn and others are giving them the opportunity to come and sit at the table, but you never get to hear a lot of success stories about people who actually got a contract, who actually got a chance to do something. And that's where my concern is, because I see people coming, and they're excited, and they're exchanging cards and doing all that, but you never hear that "I got a contract" or "I was able to do this or that." So, I was just wondering, are there some success stories that we could talk about and possibly share with others?
I can answer that. So, part of the tracking that we do, and I've provided that information before, so we do have a list of the successful... we're actually... and we're putting it... we're kind of cleaning it up because we were asked at the last EIC meeting some questions. So, we're putting a list together. We've got 65... I believe it's 65 contracts have been let to MBE and WB trade partners. And so, we do have that information available. That would be the success stories of successful bidders, and then we also have the information of the actual folks that bid, but maybe weren't successful on the project.
Well, maybe I missed it. I always see where people...
I haven't provided that.
Okay. Because I didn't see that, and that's why I was just wondering. Can we say... and I'd like to be able to tell somebody, hey, a few people are getting it, and these people got it, and what we need to do to help them. Because, again, we're... we've got a lot of taxpayers. People are working. They live in the community. They want to participate. They want to be a part of it, and sometimes they feel like they're left out.
Would that be something that's discussed at your meeting for the MWVBE? Is that something you guys discuss during the quarterly meetings that you guys have?
The specific information I just talked about, we'll be presenting at the next EIC meeting on October 9th. The MWVBE meeting that we do at J. Dunn, we have different teams come in and talk about opportunities, and Nikisha will usually have a guest speaker or two at those meetings. But the information I just referenced, as far as the list of successful trade partners, we plan to discuss that at that EIC meeting. But the information that I just referenced, as far as the list of successful trade partners, we plan to discuss that at that EIC meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One last question. Where are you located, sir?
Our office is located at eleven, three, twenty-two, West Seventy-Ninth Street in Lenexa, Kansas. But the Mountain Plains, we've been around for forty-five years. We're part of the National Minority Supplier Development Council, authorized by the federal government to convey ethnic minority certifications.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Just like to say that we are just greatly overwhelmed at seeing the good work that you all have done and making sure that our schools are operating at the way that they should. Again, we'd like to say thank you. At this time, we will have an update on the central kitchen project and approval of the increase to GMP by Mr. Dennis Covington.
As at the Kansas City Board of Education, approved the GMP amendment with McGowan Gordon. That's submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Operating Officer, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening again. We have the representative from McGowan here to discuss and bring us information on the reason for the increase.
Hello, thanks for having us. My name is Chris Hess. I'm with McGowan Gordon Construction. I'm the project executive. I've been involved since the project started in early March. This is Mark Spurgeon with WSKF, and I'm assuming that you've met him previously?
Yes, I've been involved since the beginning.
So, what we want to do today is, first of all, the project's in good shape. We're sprinting towards a turnover in November. We have run into one issue that we want to walk you through the history of today and then request approval to increase the overall GMP amount to accommodate that, so that we have adequate funds to finish the project. It is an issue that was completely unavoidable by the team, and we feel that it is a justified change order, and that's why we're coming to the board today. So, we're going to start with a little bit of the history of events, and then we'll go from there.
I think we have a slide that shows kind of the timeline of events. So, when we started this project, early summer of eighteen, we met, we do our due diligence, talk to the BPU Water Department, Electric Department, get their input as to where connections are going to be for the utilities that come to the building. First, we verify that there is utilities available for buildings, which we did. At that point in time, we were told that the water line we need to connect to is on the north side of State Avenue. So, in the process that we go through, this had, if you remember, this had to be rezoned. This piece of property had to be rezoned for the kitchen facility to be put onto. So, as part of that, when we go to the unified government, they require all the civil documents be completed, a hundred percent completed, prior to approval by the zoning department. So, that included the water line, which meant that was submitted to BPU for approval, and they approved the design connecting to the water line that was on the south side, or the north side of State Avenue. We got through the zoning issues. I'm not going to read through all the dates. We got through the zoning issues, got approval by the Planning Commission, and got approved by the Board of Commissioners for the UG. We then submitted for a building permit. Again, all our documents go back to all the various departments, including the BPU Water Department. They again approved the original drawings that we had submitted. After that, and that happened in December twenty-eighth of two thousand eighteen, we got our building permit, started work. When the utility contractor excavated to get to that water line, BPU came out and said, oops, you can't connect to this. It's a thirty-six inch transmission line. So, they said at that point, you need to bore under State Avenue to connect to the water line that you need to use for this site. So, that's kind of where the issue started. At that point, we were well under construction on the project, and I'll kind of let Chris take it from there when we get into some of the pricing.
Yeah, so, at that point, obviously, water's critical to turning over the building, but obviously, the project had some contingencies going into the project. It was around two and a half percent, something like that. So, what we decided to do as a team to see if we could, you know, kind of get a better feel for where the costs are and then make the decision if we needed to come back to the board or not, was to try to get far enough along with our risk and see if anything came up before we had to actually install the line. Well, we're at the point we need to install the line. We have run into some other items that we've used contingency for that we are going to need some additional funds to finish the project. In our mind, the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight sixty-six is plenty of, is the cost associated with the water tap. It will allow us around thirty to forty thousand dollars in remaining contingency to finish the project getting to November, which, if there's any savings that are a result of that, would come back to you. But at this point, that's what we would recommend to the board.
So, in order to finish the work, we have to tie it to the water line that's now across the street instead of on the same side of the street. And the cost to do that is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
I have a question, and I know we need the water, but BPU made some errors. They don't try to work with us, make some adjustment, because they made a costly error.
No, ma'am. They just tell us that the water line they said we could tie to is too small. We got to go across the street. I mean, it was too big. Now, we got to go across the street.
So, there, go ahead.
So, the drawing you, that's on here, could you explain that a little more?
Sure.
So, it's going underneath?
Right, so, the original design, the yellow part was where we took off from the meter box that connected to the water line that ran across there. So, we now had to bore under the street, and it's an eight-inch line that we're boring under the street because it's for both the fire protection and domestic water. Since it's a kitchen, we've got a larger domestic water line, too, because you can imagine the use of water in it. So, that's really the biggest challenge that we had in that, that's what the two drawings represent. Once we get past the meter, the water lines stayed the same. It was in the same location. So, there's really no additional charges except from where the meter box is located to go underneath State Avenue. And we had to go fairly deep to get under the road, too, because of all the other utilities. There's like a fifty-foot easement there, and every utility you can think of runs through that easement along State Avenue on the south side. Now, and then BPU, they do, they pick up the cost to tap the line. So, but I can tell you from experience, I probably have done twenty jobs in KCK with BPU, and every one of them, we have issues as far as additional costs because they just have issues with that.
So, to clarify, have we verified that the line is there, the water line is for sure? For sure?
BPU has actually already dug the hole through that, and they have actually put a tap in there. So, we're ready for the water line once we have the funds to push it under the road.
So, you mentioned that they will pick up the cost to tap the line. How much is that?
That's already in the budget.
It was in our original.
It's already in the budget. It's not an additional cost.
Okay.
They do that. They won't let an outside company tap the water line because they want to be responsible for what happens to their water line.
I guess my challenge.
I have a, no comment, sorry. Go ahead. I have a question. Will you do the work, or will you send, put that out to bid, to do?
KISSIC Construction, they bid out the different components. They were already on the contract.
So, you have some bids on that already?
They, from KISSIC, they priced it, yeah. That's what's included in the, if you look in the backup that we provided, KISSIC was the contractor that's already doing the rest of the utility work. So, they went, we had a price from them, negotiated for what that price would be. They're currently tracking their costs, and we're going to reconcile that once they're complete.
So, you're saying both BPU and UG approved this without knowledge of the actual line?
Well, the UG really did, and it's BPU Waters. They approved the drawings as to where we should make our connections. They provided us some documentation that says here where you need to connect to, and then they were wrong in what they provided us the information on.
There's no way in which they will negotiate with us to, because they approved it?
Right. Yeah, they, we don't have the relationship with BPU to be able to do that. If you have an internal relationship, it may be worth approaching them, but I agree with Mark, and our experience is, it was a mistake that was made by an engineer. You know, we priced it based on what the documents said. The design team designed it based on the information they have. Keep in mind, this is underground, and nobody could have done anything. Unfortunately, when we called to ask for them to make the tap is when they recognized the issue. So, I honestly, it's an honest mistake. It's not that they did anything. It's just unfortunately, they didn't catch it when they reviewed the drawings, and that's how we bid it to the rest of the subcontractors, and it wasn't accurate, unfortunately.
But we have to have the water.
Yeah, but when you say honest mistake, we have to eat the cost. Honest mistakes and eating costs are two different things.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, it's BPU, they're a public utility. Again, we would not have the wherewithal to be able to get them to pay for it.
Right, but there were no drawings that you referred to for, and you're saying their drawings were incorrect, or their?
They provided us drawings that showed this water line and water line across the street and said we could tap the one that we drew it to. So, yes, they provided us where their water lines were in a previous meeting and told us what to do, and that's what we did. And that's why they approved it actually twice in our submission.
And those drawings were incorrect?
They were made, they were tapped to the wrong line, but it was there, it was what BPU told us to do, so yes. BPU was incorrect from the start as to which water line to tap to.
Okay, well, it has to be done. So, could I get a motion that we approve the GMP amendment with McGowan Gordon that's submitted by Dennis Covington, as recommended by Dr. Faust for the one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, would it be appropriate, or I will make the motion, if it is appropriate for us to write a letter to BPU expressing some, some concern that, you know, out of a two hundred and thirty-five million dollar bond, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand may not be considered a lot, but this may happen again. So, if it's appropriate, I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion.
Part of that motion is that either Dr. Faust, in conjunction with Legal, write the letter?
Acceptable. Okay. Right, the motion has been made that with Dr. Faust and Legal would write a letter to BPU expressing our concern about the GMP central kitchen project? Any questions? I have a motion, please. All those.
Make the motion.
I'm sorry. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm standing.
Thank you. The ayes have it. The motion, and that will be taken care of. Thank you. We are now ready for the Kansas City Public Library update coming from Ms. Carol Levers.
As at the Kansas City Board of Education, accept a report on the public libraries as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Mrs. Drew.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust, this is the August report for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library. As you all know, our mission is connecting members of our dynamic community with information, tools, resources, and welcoming spaces to enrich their lives. We have a vision statement, leading the way in reading, information, and culture. We have five values, excellence in public services. And I just want to break down under excellence in public services, we have four goals. One is to be a one-million circulation library. One is create a master facilities plan. The third one is increase access to technology to support patron experience in the library. And the fourth one is to increase services to people who can't come to the library. We've reached all three of these goals except one. But I'm happy to announce today that we have met the fourth goal in being a one-million circulation for eighteen, nineteen year. As you can see.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As you can see in our slide there, thirty-three or thirty-four percent of our circulation came from the West Winder Library, and of course, main library. The West Winder Library checked out about three hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and sixty-seven items last year. And of course, you can go through the whole thing there. The next, the orange slide tells you what type of circulation we've done. AV, and that's the DVDs, the CDs, et cetera, is still number one checkout item. And forty-one, almost forty-two percent comes from our AV checkout. Print, books, magazines, et cetera, is number two. And of course, digital is our number three check, checkout. Our online renewals, we have about fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four items that we check out online during last year. But we all, especially the staff, is very excited about the fact that we've reached all our goals that we've set in our strategic plan. Our programs, our outreach for eighteen, nineteen, as you can see to your right, we had three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two programs throughout the whole system. We had fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety people attend all those programs in all our libraries. And it's alphabetical and not numerical with this name, but you can see that West Winder had the most people attend their programs. One thousand four hundred and fourteen people attend the programs at West. South was nine hundred and twenty-five, and system-wide, we had two thousand three hundred and forty-nine people attending. Our outreach, and that is outside the libraries, our programs, we had nine hundred and eighty-four programs outside the library. That's in churches, in daycares, assisted livings, et cetera. And we had seventy-four thousand two hundred and thirty-two people attend those programs. Our ECON library, we've checked out a hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seven items on the ECON library. UPLA, and that's for digital books, the highest items that we check out. Tumble Books is usually, most of our schools have access to Tumble Books. We had fifty-four thousand three hundred and forty-four items. And of course, then it goes down to our Flipster, which is our digital magazines. We have three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight items. Canopy, and that's the streaming of videos and movies, three hundred, one, three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. Of course, the database sessions that our patrons have accessed. News Bank is the number one database that our patrons access, and they, three hundred and, three thousand six hundred and eighty-nine has been accessed. You can go down the line there. Mango Reference, USA Ancestry, et cetera. The total is twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-three times have our database been accessed. Other numbers of note, we have had one million twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighteen visits throughout the system last year. We have ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two total patrons on our list in the libraries. We had a hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-seven computer usage throughout the system, and we had thirty-one art exhibits throughout the system. Our social media, we had three thousand and fifty-five new followers added to our list, and we have a total of thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four followers. Our public relations, we have, we had a hundred and thirty-four media mentions during last year. And our extension services is actually ILL, which is interlibrary loan. We had requests nationwide. We had ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-two requests for items that we have in our catalog. We could only share five thousand eight hundred and two, being, we don't usually loan out brand-new items because we just feel that our community- just feel that our community needs to have first dip. And whatever, older magazines or items that people want to borrow, that's what we normally do. But our community borrowed 2,303 items throughout the nation. 2,043 were filled because the others could not be filled. We, 406 patrons last year initiated all these requests. Our summer reading for this past summer, if you look to the blue box to your right, all the other numbers are on your left. We had 1,881 youth participated this year in summer reading in comparison to 1,631 last year. Adults, we had 788 people sign up for summer reading in comparison to 767. And we have different groups throughout the, our community, that's church group, youth group, outside, book clubs. We had 1,035 people sign on during our summer reading in comparison to 1,250 last year. So, books logged for just that group, it was 41,458 in comparison with 60,000. And that is, we've, last year and the years before, we had people just log books all the time. And people, we went to 10 books, but people kept on logging and we added those books, but we felt that there were some kids who just couldn't keep up and we had it at six. And that's why the numbers are a little bit skewed this year. We have a lot of community partners. Like I said, 20 partners in different reading locations throughout Wyandotte County. And 1,035, like I mentioned, took part. Our community partnerships were from 68 different schools. That's USD 500, 204, 202, paper, all of Wyandotte County schools participated. And 6.9% of Kansas, the Kansas population, age 0 to 17, participated in the children's summer reading. Readings by number, again, just concentrate on your right-hand side. Our children's, the programs presented, we had 11,484 programs. And in comparison with 7,880 last year. 8,670 children attended this year in comparison to 3,937. So, we had 118.87% increase. Our teens, just about 20 increased, 1,092 in comparison with 1,078. Adults went down a little bit because we're switching the adults to a winter reading this year instead of summer. The bottom box, materials that circulated this summer, we had 67,377 items circulate for our juvenile in comparison with 59,577. Adult was 97,000. Mobile library checked out 5,814 items. Our e-community for the summer checked out 14,662. Our total checkout for the summer was 184,934. We had 63 volunteers that donated 821 and a quarter hours of their time for the summer. This year, we had our fourth-year dot com fan convention and it was held at the West Wyandotte Library. The theme was Universe of Fandoms. We had 350 people attend. And if you're interested in looking at pictures, you can go to flicker.com/kckpl/albums. Just to let you know that our fifth annual library in the park is coming up and that'll be September 28th, 19, at Big Eleven Lake. And we, our new, our author featuring, author is Christine Taylor Butler that will be there. And I've also left some handouts for you to remind you of our Butterfly Festival. September 29, I think it's on there. Any questions?
Thank you so much. You know, I was really, when I went through this, I was impressed with how much reading is important to people, particularly not only with young people, but for adults as well. And the data that you submitted to us lets us know that it's very important and that hopefully those numbers will continue to increase. Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
And I want to say thank you as well. Hoopla is one thing that I encourage all adults who want to read or listen via audiobooks. They have lots of audiobooks for adults. Also, my kids were part of the summer program. All of them got prizes and books and things of that nature. So, I really thank you for all the work and hard work your staff put in. They always are so encouraging for the students who come in to, hey, sign up for the reading program. Did you want to read a book here or things of that nature? To help them still understand that even if they choose to read in the library or things of that nature, they can count those books. So, I really appreciate all the efforts, especially in the senior living places. I didn't know until I visited my grandma and I was like, the library brings books here and interchanges the books? So, it was great to see that, that reading is encouraged all ages. There's no age limit to reading and thank you for helping put literacy in our community.
Anyone else?
I just like a quick question. What is the status of the new library? Are you still pursuing that building, the new library?
Yeah, we're going to start all over again. I think you, two, a couple of months ago, the board voted for a new architect to, to redo the feasibility studies. So, we waiting on that.
Gotcha, okay.
And I also like to encourage, I wanted to go to the library in park. I had the privilege of going last year, really enjoyed it. It was good to see all people there and just learning and listening and then just fellowshipping together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Faust?
I'd ask that the Kansas Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report and Recommendations for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent.
I make a motion that we approve the Human Resource Report and Recommendations for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the report. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is passed. Dr. Faust?
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the addendum to the public library's calendar for the 2019-20 as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
Any questions? I have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the addendum to the 2019-2020 Public Library Calendar.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded to approve the addendum to the 2019-2020 Public Library Calendar. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Motion has been passed.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills for the public library as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
We need a motion to approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and so therefore the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries will be done. So, now we're ready for the reports of the superintendent.
So, before I read this, this was actually in our budget. We're in Navient, so you remember, we had talked about Navient's earlier. So, we have a representative from Navient's, somewhere in the building. I thought we did.
Navient's?
I was told that there was a representative here. That the Kansas City Board of Education approve the purchase of Navient Software Program for College Planning and Career Assessment Tools as submitted by Dr. Lynette Hookfin, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. LaShonda Bilbo Irving, Director of Diploma Plus, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools. So, I think they've already, they gave a report earlier this year, but I, we have Dr. Bilbo Irving?
The approval for the purchase of the Navient software is the college and career planning software that will be in all of our middle and high schools that will help us track data for college and career planning. It also, several features for the program that we are purchasing really will help our high school students track their career interests throughout their time in school. It will also help Diploma Plus with making sure that we are tracking endorsements as it relates to college graduation. Students are able to create resumes inside of the tool. Students are able to connect with colleges and universities inside of the tool. A wealth of information that will help students be college and career-ready and assist them in their planning.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Will it also help them, when we look at what we pay for the program? We only had one the first year I was on the board and this past year we had two. Can it kind of help them steer and make sure they're taking the right courses to get an associate's degree?
Yes.
Will it help them with that?
Yes, ma'am. So, that comes with the individual plan of study, which is also tracked through the Navient's program.
And they are currently working on pathways. So, you and I are on the same page and we've talked about, about that also, so that they're no longer going to be just taking random courses. So, they are streamlining and giving them a pathway of which courses they would need to take.
And I also had previously asked about parent access to make sure that parents can see and have access to understand, to make sure that ki, that our kids, we're still held responsible as parents to know what our kids are taking. So, I also asked about that earlier, about parents.
Yes, ma'am. And as our staff members are trained on Navient's, the parent liaisons at different campuses will also be training parents on how to access the system and what reports they should be looking at to help assist their child in college and career planning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything?
The prepaid, non-refundable travel, is that for someone to come here?
From the company to train our employees?
Yes. And so, we will have a trainer, trainer models. We will train principals, assistant principals, counselors, faces, members, middle school liaison. So, we're training a lot of our staff members to go out and train teachers in the schools.
And we will have a phone follow-up if we have questions and things after the initial training.
Yes, we will be assigned an onsite coordinator from Navient's that will be with us throughout our launch. And then after that time period is over, we will have immediate access to them through phone conferences throughout the entire launch of the year's program.
And does it, does it come in other languages or is it just English or is it English and Spanish or...
I don't have that information. As far as I know, right now, it's English only.
Okay. And is there an advantage over this program?
No, it is. I'm sorry, I have information. It's English and Spanish.
And English and Spanish? Because that's our predominant second language. Is there a way that, that's a strange question. Is there a way that we can get it in other languages? Do they have that developing or available?
I can definitely check with the company to see if there are other languages other than Spanish that they provide.
Okay, excuse me, I want to interrupt. We have a representative from Navient's. Could you...
No, she's from other Diploma Plus team.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
So, prior to Ms. Bilbo, they were on the team that actually did the, I guess more or less of a survey analysis of what the company had to offer.
Sorry. So, it's available in English, Spanish, Arabic, Portuguese, and Chinese. And then they're also working on additional languages for future renditions.
And the current program that we use is career cruising.
Correct.
And can, there was a question about the difference in career cruising and Navient's. Can you share?
As far as language?
No, 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 about the, the difference and why would we choose Navient's versus career cruising.
Oh, so, Navient's has a lot more capability for students to connect with colleges through application, through transcript, through access to colleges, information about jobs that are available. So, if I'm interested in pursuing this particular career, there's a whole bank of videos that I can go on and watch as a student. So, if I'm interested in this career, I can, I can get more information from someone on the platform about like what college experience they had, what their employment's like as far as entry level, growing, and then top level, aligning salaries to that information. So, it just gives them access to kind of a whole, a whole picture of what they might want to do as far as college and career goes.
And it also meets the requirement for the state for the individual plan of study.
Yes.
So, they start that in eighth grade and then they're able to, Dr. Yager was asking about parents. Parents are able to go in and see their individualized plan of study. You can update your individualized plan of study throughout your years in high school and then we're able to commit with saying that X amount of students have created an individualized plan of study.
And then they have access to that post-secondary, which is nice.
Thank you. That answered all my questions.
Madam President? You know, technology changes so often and institutions of higher education change their requirements for degrees and things. So, how, how soon, and you just, you don't know the answer, but how soon do you think this is going to need updates or need us to change?
It's aligned with college board and so it aligns itself with the college and universities.
So, the company's continuously making those updates to the software as the kids, as they get that information.
But it's anything that...
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we need a motion to... Go ahead, did you have questions?
I make a motion, no. I make a motion to approve the Navient Software Program for College Planning and Career Assessment.
It's to be seconded?
I second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has been carried. Dr. Faust?
I'd ask that the Kansas Board of Education approve KASB Recommended Policy Updates as reviewed by District Legal Counsel and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Any questions, concerns?
I wish I had the motion first, don't you?
I'm asking if you have any questions about this first.
Okay.
Before we make a motion.
Okay. Madam President, I'm, I'm concerned. And I'm concerned that we haven't, as a board, taken time to evaluate our own policies in view of the compliance audit. And regardless of your, your view of the, the conclusion or your view of the auditor, I believe that these, these policies especially have caused some concern to, I'll just say to, to myself, to community members. And so, I'll respectfully say that I won't be able to support the motion. When I did make the motion for us to evaluate ourselves and look at policies, it failed. And so, I guess my greatest concern is that we're not willing to, to take a step back and evaluate ourselves, especially with the policies on recruitment and hiring that are in this first series. So, I will respectfully vote no and, and ask for a recorded vote. Thank you.
I will clarify that the board last year had a retreat in which we did evaluate ourselves. And as I recall, Dr. Nguyen and other members, we evaluate ourselves. We saw each other's ratings. We saw each other's ratings. We asked for someone to come in and talk about those ratings. That person was given probably about half the time that they were supposed to, to come and provide an analysis. If you go back to the recordings, you'll see I shared what I was and how I self-evaluated myself. I asked other board members to share. And Dr. Nguyen, unfortunately, when I asked what yours was, you preferred to kept that private, which is perfectly fine. But we have evaluated ourself. But when we evaluate ourself, we have to be true to what we say. If we choose to evaluate and we take our time to rate ourselves and others, we have to be open. We have to be willing to say, okay, this is what I rated myself. How can we work with others? How can we do things? Maxine and I just became president and vice president this past month. And so prior to that, we did not schedule time beyond that to get together. So I would continue for us to think about, as we've asked about knowing things in advance or concerns that may come up, it would have been great to know some of these things prior to this meeting. So I just wanted to make that statement publicly, that we as a board have evaluated ourself, and we brought people in to analyze that evaluation.
And if I may, Madam President, I, I directed my comments to the audit, and I'm saying not only ourselves, but also the board policies concerning governance. So yes, I, we were all there in January. And that was January of 2018? We have to reflect back. I don't, was 2019?
Nineteen.
Whenever it was. And this is, this is not a surprise. I mean, I've, I've spoken to, to the president. So, you know, we, we've already gone through that hurdle. But this is, this is discussion on these policies. I'm just stating that because we haven't looked at the policies specifically that were identified in the audit that specifically dealt with hiring, recruitment, such as that compensation, that I, I, I'm making the statement and, and follow up with the, the motion that you also made. Need to hear from legal about our evaluation tool, and we haven't heard from that. But nevertheless, I'm just addressing these policies and saying, I thought, I believe we, we could take a step back and not rush to, in my opinion, adopt these now. There's, I mean, they're not, they're not going to change anything in the world, but again, I respectfully said I won't vote to support it, and I'm explaining why, and thank you.
And I guess I just need clarification. We add, and part of our board norms is that we won't surprise other board members?
This is not surprise. This is discussion.
Well, I'm saying, we could have, you know, requested that we vote on it later. We could have requested other, you know, prior to the meeting.
That's just it. I'm not surprising you by saying let's table, let's do anything. I'm not saying that. So I'm not trying to surprise you. I'm just saying, I personally will not vote, and I'm giving the reason why. So no, 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 there are no surprises.
Thank you for letting us know at the meeting.
Let me just say this. I, I thank you for sharing your thoughts and your ideas, and as a board, we will respect the fact that you choose not to adhere to be in agreement with this. But one of the things, what I have been looking at is understanding that we have been on a road that other things have been coming up, and we have not effectively worked as well as we could have. We've been transitioning, we're changing, we're learning how to do things. And I think now, more than anything, what we have to do is to recognize that we have to come together as a board to be unified, to do what we can, to do what's best for our kids, for our community, to include parents, as well as making sure that we send out a message to all of our stakeholders that we are going to work collectively together. We have to start somewhere. And I believe that since these policies have been recommended, let's start today acknowledging what they are, and then let's move forward so that we can do the best we can to be the best board for our city, for our students, for the parents. Because if we don't collectively get together, we will never resolve or solve anything. So I thank you for your comments, and I respect you 100% in making that decision. But what I would like for us to do as a board is to approve the KASB recommendation policy updates, and then that way we'll have a direction as to where we're going to move after today forward as a board. So I would like to have a motion from the floor, please.
I move we approve the updates on the specific policies listed.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. The motion has been made that we approve KASB recommended policy updates. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me. It was a request for a roll call vote. Can we do that, please?
Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
Harold Brown?
No.
Maxine Drew?
Yes.
Annie Humphries?
Yes.
One to Brownlee Page?
No.
Dr. Nguyen?
No.
Stacey Ayer?
Yes.
Do we have a three-three tie?
Greg, could you clarify when the timeframe would need to be in order for us to make a decision?
Well, the, the policies, if there's not a four votes in favor of them, they don't pass the changes, so the current policy stays in effect.
I'm, Madam President, I would make a motion that we table it and have, and at the end of our session today, where we're talking about the calendar, create a time so that we can discuss it further.
You want to do that publicly?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
But for us to come together and schedule a time so we can talk about it more in depth, so those concerns from members can be properly heard.
Okay. Any comments?
It needs to be seconded.
I need a second on that, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So the motion is that we table to approve the KASB recommendation policy and table it to create a time in which we can publicly come together and discuss it to reach an agreement. All those in favor? Would you like for us to verbally do that? Dr. Nguyen?
We didn't ask for it.
No, I'm just asking, would you prefer?
Not necessary.
Okay. So therefore, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. We will now go to the next one.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the first read proposed changes to board policy G A R H, attendance, absence, leaves, vacations, as submitted by legal counsel and as recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Are there any comments? Could I get a motion to accept the first read proposed changes to board policy G A R H, attendance, absences, leaves, and vacations?
I make a motion that we accept for the first read the proposed changes to the board policy G A R H, attendance, absences, leaves, and vacations.
Thank you. And then one second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I have a question. Greg, are, are these consistent with the contract?
So, yeah, so the way this works, when we did the last negotiated agreement, the board policies are adopted as they relate to leaves and other absences, except to the extent there are additional leaves or absences provided for in the negotiated agreement. And so the reason this was not included with the packet of the other policy changes is the board pol, or the contract requires us to share these proposed changes to the leave policy with the union before it's presented to the board. That is, that has been done. The union has a copy of it to review. If the board ultimately adopts these changes, none of these changes become available to the union members, the teachers, until after next year's contract is ratified. So these changes to leave policy would impact your classified and administrative staff, but they would not affect the teachers until after next year's contract would be ratified. And if you look at them, most of these relate to changing the ability to take leave increments of half-days down to taking it for hours. That's the main change that's in these policy provisions.
Any other questions for discussion? We will take a vote. All those in favor of accepting the first read proposed changes for board policy G A R H, attendance, absences, leaves, and vacations? All would say aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and therefore it is passed. Dr. Faust?
I'd also like to bring back to your remembrance, the next item for the installation of the Safe Defense was approved on the, the big budget meeting. So what we're having the individual come and explain about the system. So I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve Phase One installation of Safe Defense Crisis Response and Personnel Protection System in the amount of $274,050.50 submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, Wayne Correll, Director of Purchasing, and is recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Faust, board members. If you have any questions for us, I know we've reviewed this once before, we'll be happy to answer those questions. I'd like to remind everybody that the totality of this project runs in three phases. Phase one is elementary schools and early childhood centers. Phase two will move into all high schools, middle schools, and other district buildings. Phase three will include our libraries. The total cost of packages, I don't have the exact number in the $600,000 range. We offset that with a safe and secure state grant of about $286,000 this year. So we're moving forward with phase one. I have the CEO of the company here, Jeff Green, and if you have any questions specifically about this system, he's here to answer that. We also have a system on display in the superintendent's office that we've been more than glad to show you at one of your breaks. We tend to keep our security systems tight to cuff, as we should. So if there's any questions for Mr. Green, I'd open the floor up to you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Which 35 buildings are going to be covered under this contract?
All the pre-existing buildings, and when those buildings are either demolished or turned back into new buildings, that equipment will be turned over to those new buildings as well. So it's all elementary currently open. We don't want to leave any building not open.
Right.
And then as we bring the new buildings onboard, like West Parker, and it's Bruny, the, the other buildings that we vacate, we'll bring that system into those buildings.
Okay. So you're saying they're doing the elementary, and then you're going to do the middle and high schools?
Yes, ma'am. Elementarys, early childhood centers are phase one. Phase two will be all high schools, middle schools, and other district buildings such as central office, north central office, and those ancillary buildings like, we have to bring online, obviously, our new kitchen and everything else.
Okay. So if I did my math right, which I may not have done, it looks like we're paying, we would be paying around $75 a month for monitoring services. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's after the first year. That's all included for the first year. But, but we're different than a typical security company. We're not just a, an alarm system. We actually have a communication management piece that includes text and email alerts that'll go designated to the staff in that building, will be designated to law enforcement so they can get there much more quickly, as well as then Dr. Faust and his staff would need to know information as soon as possible to start their support. All that's provided under that communication management aspect. And because of the number of schools you guys have, we have discounted that pretty substantially over what is typically in, in place in other buildings.
I remember we used to pay $65 a month at a restaurant for that type of coverage, so 75 looked pretty good to me.
We can all, we can always change that.
No, 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 you can't change it.
That's what we like.
You're going to furnish 17 hours of training? Is that correct?
Correct. And that's based on, for the elementary side of things, the phase one, that'd be about doing two schools at a time for about an hour apiece to give them the best practices and active shooter response. Our lead trainer is one of the best in the country, speaks nationally, and he brings, he wants to, he'll bring in the, the actual training aspect for the staff, so they'll all be able to be trained on how to respond if the system's activated, how to activate the system, best practices in protecting themselves and their students.
Okay. And then, this was a technical question. On page three of the contract, and on, it was like number 10, indemnification, and then number four on the contractual provisions attachment, they seem to contradict each other. Maybe Mr. Correll?
The DA 146 supersedes the contract.
Okay, the state one?
That's a state required.
Okay, so if you, you look at the two, you go by the state if there's disagreement. Okay. That make, I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure.
It's mandatory that we include the DA 146 in all of our.
And I do want to make sure that the board received an amended contract, because we contacted the vendor and made sure they made those amendments to the contract that you should all have available.
Okay.
So it's one year with the state provisions under contractual language that we have to, every year we can evaluate that contract.
Okay, so every year we can evaluate, and if we're not happy with our, our services?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for all those answers.
All right. Any other questions?
Do you have an estimated cost of phase two?
I think the total is about $600,000. Where we get into some variances on services, could be, we could run into a building that needs cabling, or some kind of, that might have to, like, I'm going to give an example, Stanley, New Stanley, it's an older building. Sometimes it's a little not cost-effective, we got to drill through one of the old brick and mortar type of walls. So some of those expenses could occur at that time. When we first did the initial part of it, we also have to do all the walkthroughs on all the buildings. We have to look at all the blueprints and strategically kind of place where these are going to go, and figure out the wiring distance back to our switches, and is our switches compatible? So there's some additional costs that come, but that's usually a service cost. We just don't know what we get into, just like you made mention earlier about some newer, older technologies that we have pre-existent. I know that the board just recently approved the new budget, where we're actually going to go back with TIS and look at some revisions and revisiting to update our older technologies to make them compatible with new technologies.
We have to trust BPU?
Good question. I hope not.
I know that. Good question.
I have a kind of stupid question. Why, why do we need this?
Sir, I tell you what, that is actually a very good question. Mr. Covington and I sat down here, it was in May, at the end of the school year, and a quick short story is, we felt very vulnerable in our elementary schools. So we kind of got our heads together, and we said, where is this locally that we can visit where we had an active assailant? We actually visited the Jewish Community Center. Chuck Green is the Director of Security, is the former Special Agent in Charge of the Secret Service here locally, and we sat down with them. Obviously, we know the tragedy that took place at the Jewish Community Center, and we tried to think of, what is a quicker way? We know most of these events will be over with in about two minutes' time nationally. The biggest and the hardest, difficult part right now is getting a notification out to the responders. So what is a quicker, faster way to do that in an environment like an elementary school or an early childhood center? This is a biometric system. You touch it, it activates. It's a tiered system of notification. It will send out notifications to all first responders, all of our staff members alike, so we know what to do to take action. Then we plan for that with our SRP model and everything else that we're doing with emergency operation plans.
Could I just add? One of the things we realize is the bad guy's probably already inside the building. And so how do we manage that crisis once the bad guy's inside the building? And that's what we do better than any other company that's out there. Staff are empowered to be able to set that notification off. Not only does it get law enforcement there much more quickly, and the guys that we want to get there, it's also going to give staff that, in that building, the knowledge they need to manage that crisis. You think you might hear gunshots or, or chaos going off throughout a building. Emmy Pearson, for example, who used to be Assistant Principal on that second floor, you're not going to know what's going on on the first floor unless you have some sort of indication. We're able to give the staff that indication of what's going on, where it's taking place, help them manage that crisis at that crisis moment, keep themselves and their kids alive until the good guys get there.
Okay, you know, I was, I guess probably about, oh, some months ago, we had someone come to us and talk about random shooter. Would this replace a need for having that kind of insurance?
I, I'm going to defer that to legal, because I think you're still going to have to have some type of insurance based on your rider policies, or Dennis Covington at that. I apologize.
I think you're still going to need it.
Still need it, okay.
It might help, though, with the actual liability side of things. We do, we have had insurance companies give discounts.
Might be cheaper.
For putting our system in.
Yeah, 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 right, okay.
Service, but you're still going to want coverage.
Right, right.
When you have false alarms, you know how we have our alarm systems at home, and they only give you so many free false alarms? So is there a added cost?
I'll answer that. So the system has a, and when we show this to you, we'll talk about false, what's the difference between a false and what's activated, how our employees are in there, and how you have an active touch or an inactive touch and everything. So we'll talk about that when we have the display, but there's a way around that. We, this is our system. This is not being monitored, and they're not charging us false alarms.
Okay.
If that, if that answers that question.
Yeah, that's, I didn't know, because most of them do.
Yes, ma'am.
That you only get so many free, and after that.
I'm, I'm familiar with the city, city ordinance on that. Yes, ma'am. This is not that.
You know, the state grant, we don't know how long that will continue. You know, the state grant, we don't know how long that will continue. So the matching grant probably, first, would Phase two be eligible to apply for that matching grant, security grant?
I don't know what the read's going to be at, because remember, they released that about May, there's only about a 30-day window to do that, and they're stipulated under the nine criteria under Safe and Secure Schools. This one, this year, happened to be that, at the exact same time we was looking for something. So next year it might be some other area, I'm not too sure, but that won't be available till May, our project could be all the way done by then.
This or Phase two?
All three phases.
All three phases?
We are trying to be wishful thinkers here.
And whether it is or not, would Phase three being a library facilities, would that be eligible for the matching grant?
Library facilities, one's the school district, that's how we're doing the eligibility, but I think we'll go through our state money between the two phases, because the most, most of the buildings are our elementary, so I think we'll do the match, dollar for dollar, on that first phase or within the second phase.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions? So we need a motion to approve Phase one installation of Safe Defense Crisis Response and Personal Protection System?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first-phase installation of the Self-Defense Crisis Response and Personal Protection System.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the approval of the Phase one installation has been done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're ready for the consent agenda. Any questions?
Madam President, if it's possible, I'd like to set aside Section C of Item C.
Thank you. Any others? So therefore, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Section C and Item C.
Of Item C.
Of Item C, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus Section C.
Item C.
Item C.
Need a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the, that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Section C, Item C. Are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is approved with the exception of Section C, Item C. Okay, at this point, we are now ready to approve payment of bills.
I said the Kansas Board of Education approved the payment of bills as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Need a motion, please?
Move we pay our bills.
Seconded by anyone?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we pay our bills. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Or discussion?
Because I noticed the format is different, I apologize, but I was just wondering, can we get something that would denote what the types are? It's a little different than the way you normally had it.
I thought we had submitted the substitute report, which looks like you should have gotten last month, so if you don't have it, we will give you this report as it normally looks.
Okay.
This was a vast report, so we actually submitted the wrong report to you, but we do have the correct report.
It's the third one.
That was sent to you, and you posted it, correct, from Lisa.
The addendum.
She sent you the original report as well.
If she did, I'll make sure that you get the standard bills report that looks like.
It's your third one.
It's the third, it's the third one.
It's the third file.
The addendum.
Okay, got you. I just looked at the first one, I was thinking it was.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And on behalf of the purchasing department, I apologize to you, it was a mistake that that was sent to you.
You must work for BPU. No. I'm sorry.
This is just, this is a working report that the RAB department used.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sweetheart, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion to pay the bills, it was moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and we are going to pay our bills, thank you. At this time, we are, I need a motion for the board to recess to executive session at, how many minutes will we need? Okay, for 10 minutes, and at 6:40, we will go into executive sessions for 10 minutes to discuss job descriptions pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the board will return at 6:50. With no action to follow, may I have a motion?
I make a motion that we recess to executive session to discuss the job descriptions pursuant of the exception for the non-elected personnel under coma.
Need a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we will go to executive session to recess, to discuss the job description pursuant to exception for non-elected personnel under coma, and we will return at 6:50. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and we are going to executive session. So may I get a motion that we come back into open session?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we come back to open session. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposedes? Thank you. So we need to have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the positions as recommended by Dr. Faust.
Okay, so therefore, it has been moved that we approve the recommendations by Dr. Faust. Are there any questions? I have it seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to take the recommendations given by Dr. Faust. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And we are now ready to go to communications. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just a moment. Let me find my sheet.
Item, Section C.
Section C, I'm sorry, we need to approve Item C, Section C, on the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to do that, please?
So move.
It's been moved, did someone second it?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Human Resources Report and Recommendations on the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions or discussions?
Here's my question, Madam President. When we had this discussion, again, once again, there's about 22 or 23 pages of salary adjustments, and one would think, and maybe one didn't have time, to add some narrative to, or explanation for, and so, you know, once again, I'm trying to look forward and reflect on what perhaps was a problem, and so as we move forward, we don't get blindsided by 22 pages of salary adjustments, and we have no, we have limited explanation, and so that's my concern, and I would hope that in our discussion about board policies, about format of reports, we could discuss that, but just under the category of salary adjustment, you know, certain amount per hour for lunchroom supervision, you know, how does that impact the annual salary? And that was, that was, that is my question, that I know you said will be addressed in September, but that is my concern.
I can actually give some clarity. So in those positions where, of course, you know, it'll save building IPD representatives, so these, all by policy, we have to bring everyone who is going to get extra duty pay. And so it may not be.
Some were self-explanatory.
Right, right, right. So it may not, so the salary, because they're in there, we may not know that, okay, for, they may not work cafeteria duty, based on teacher, if it's a teacher negotiated contract, we have to pay them extra duty pay, so in order for them to do that, we have to put it here to give them additional salary. So a lot of these are coming from other avenues, so that we don't actually know how much it's going to be for the entire year. It's within the South, so for, I don't know how much or how many hours it's going to be that a person will have to do lunch duty, because they may not do it every day, it may be every other day, or it may be one day a week, that that would impact, so it would be kind of.
But do you understand what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying, yes. And I think what we can do is, for that, I think the clarity from that would be, we don't know the impact, because again, this is coming from the school, so if teacher A is doing after-school tutorial, it may be that he or she is only doing it once a month. So it would only be, but in order, because of our policy, we have to go ahead and, before we can pay them, we have to put them all in here, and they may not even get it at all, they may not even do it, but it just in the event that they do some extra duty, we have to pay them.
It just seems so open-ended, and that's the challenge. I think we could address, and so I stay away from the should, but that we could, and again, looking forward with 22 pages of salary adjustment, it just, we needed to address it. So thank you, and that's my, that's the reason I pulled Section C, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we're now, excuse me, we're now ready for communications, we'll start first.
You have to either approve that.
I thought we did.
You said about?
Motion.
Motion was made? It was seconded. Okay, so therefore, the motion has been made and has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll have to say no.
Thank you. Okay, the ayes have it. And so thank you, and so now we're ready for communications, starting with Dr. Faust.
Good evening, everyone. Some great news. I know that we've had some chatter about high school graduations, and that is a celebration, a time that we want to celebrate our students. One of the things that we did find out, and I didn't bring them in here, and all of you were at some form, some type of graduation, and if you went to one or two, you saw differences in each one. One of the things that we're trying to provide is equity, equity across the board for graduations. After the graduations for all schools, we looked at what we were doing, and I was one who was looking, there were other members who were giving comments, and one of the things that I'll show, the embarrassment of the actual program that was given to all of our students, it was on a piece of copy paper. Some of it was upside down, some of it was photocopied, not in color. I was talking to my mom, and I was like, hey, do you still have my graduation program? And of course, I knew she did, and it was on this cardstock, and it had this little wavy paper at the end, and a lot of times, people keep those for keepsakes.
Right.
And I have them on my desk, and I was embarrassed as a superintendent, sitting there, to say that I endorsed this, because I don't, if you know anything about me, it's going to be with high quality. And what we did, the sound wasn't working, I know that when we did one of ours together, they gave you the wrong script and had you saying the wrong thing at the wrong time. It was not what we deserve as a community, our kids need better. So what we did is, we did go back and look, and we wanted to see what was it that was impactful. That's the end, that's the culminating event for our students, and that's what we send them off on. And so what I found is that sometimes we, we don't, I've seen other graduations, and so I know what we can do as a district, because we have, it's not an, it is not a financial problem at all, it is not. And I've actually pulled our, one of our high school's activity fund, and they have $129,000 in their activity fund. So what is activity fund? That's the money they get to use, they collect at their schools, $129,000. And that's not the money that we give them, that's money they raise, $22,000 in pop machines. So pop, of course, if you, Midwest is pop, from where I'm from, it's soda, so that's what they, from students putting coins in, they get $22,000, and what we give our students is an upside-down program that is made on copy paper. $129,000, $129,000. So yes, I know we have a couple of communities that are upset because of the time, so we shared this information with principals, we started talking about it immediately after graduation, so we graduated them in May of 2019. We had a conversation, an official conversation, I think it was, in June, and it is unfortunate that some of our school leaders did not share that information with our parents. So we think about, okay, 10 months, and we're thinking, okay, it's not two months before the graduation, because I understand people are like, okay, why do I get the 10 o'clock graduation date? Why is it? Well, we have five, we have five, and so we have to rotate those, so next year it'll be the ones who got seven, they'll get the 10. We have to start, and what we're doing is, the district is looking at uniforming our graduations so that we send our kids off with the best. No more of, we have a print shop downstairs that we didn't even use, we ran, it looked like they ran them off at the school, literally, my copy was slanted, and it ran off at the end. No one was given the, denoted, like, what were they getting? No one, we talked about the memorial services, that has to all be unified. We had people who didn't want to even to share with their graduates the memorial, we got pushback on that. We had to literally put our foot down to tell them, so, you know, I'll take that part, but I'm also going to share with you, that one school, and I'll say Harmon, they're going to be paying for their seniors their prom. So they have in their budget $129,000, so if you'll remember, back in March, that same school called the media because they said that we had taken away their pep band, they were, we were paying for things, and they said the board, and it was on the news. We never did that, we never paid for anyone, but in theirs, their income, they have, this is unencumbered money, they had $129,000, when I kept telling you, it's at the school, you have to remember, I used to supervise high school principals, I know where the money is buried. So what we did is, I went over and I had Tracy pull, not Tracy, but Janaya pull the activity funds. We took that money, and I was able to look, and I found, right there, it's right here. So what I would recommend for parents, if you're on the leadership team, which there should be a school leadership team, where parents are actively involved, you should be asking these questions. Tell me why there is $22,000 in the pop account, and when teachers are wanting to have novels, you're not paying for novels. What are you doing with your $129,000? Now, I know some of this is for clubs, so yes, they even had a pep club, and they were saying that we didn't pay for the pep club, pep club had money in theirs, so the pep club at that time had $760. They were at saying that we didn't pay for a bus, but if you go to the very bottom, and this is for parents to see, $129,193.57 is the total. That is not encumbered, that is nothing, that, that's from students raising money from fees, from clubs, from pop. That's what I'm saying. So folks, if you want to understand the budget, you've got to ask those questions. This isn't a Charles Faust show, I'm trying to level the playing field so that our school and our district get the same thing that everyone else gets. And I shared last time that, you know, it's different when you have a child, because it's like, okay, so we, no one said anything about the fees, so I was wondering, why are we charging all these fees? So I get a fee, I'm like, well, wait a minute, why are we getting fees? I have no qualms of paying a fee, but I'm wanting to know, okay, we did not ask the students to go one-to-one. We were giving textbooks, those were free, and then we got through them, they were different prices. Mr. Covington met with all the principals, along with Dr. Hookfin, they took all the fees away, no more fees, but people weren't celebrating that. They jumped on, we have a graduation at ten o'clock. But what I'm saying is, the schools have the money, and they knew this and didn't communicate that. So, what should have happened, and so now, we're having to be a little more micromanaging. And so, we're bringing principals in, we're rehearsing with them. How does it work? You should have brought your seniors in, you should have talked with your seniors. Then you have a parent meeting, and you explain to them. You don't say, as the school said, if they have an issue, who at the district do they call? No, that's you. You are the principal. You can't just celebrate when things are going well. You have to celebrate when, hey, I messed up. So, I do believe in, if we mess up, we have to fix it. So, Harmon seniors, if you are a senior, and you're going to the prom, Harmon High School will be paying for your prom.
All right.
There's money in their budget to do so. And I would also recommend that parents become a part of their leadership team. And you need to find out, when does that team meet? So, you'll know when they are talking about their budget. What are they going to be doing for their school? What does it look like for graduation? What does it look like for prom? What does it look like? How, what is, what are those questions that we ask? Sometimes, we act as if we don't know, because we haven't given parents the knowledge. Well, I'm, I am very much open to giving the parents the knowledge, because as a parent, I have the knowledge. And so, what I want parents to understand, I'm saying this, and I'm hoping people will watch it, ask questions of your principal. They have, the secondary, the high schools, they have a boatload of money in their activity funds, a boatload. So, there's no reason for anyone to go liking. In addition to that, yes, we have budgeted money. Mr. Covington, during the budget meeting, he sat with all principals, one-on-one, and went through every one of their budgets with them, so they could understand it. He and his team did it, each school, each department, actually, each school leader. So, when we say that we don't know this, that's a lie. And so, what I want the community to understand is, it's not a Charles Faust making change. It's a Charles Faust exposing people and making them do better. And if you push back on things that are benefiting our kids, folks, we can't move forward. So, we have to be able to move forward. Yes, it will, well, why did Sumner, why did Washington, why didn't they get the, well, we can't have all-night graduations. We have to. The other part is, we didn't know. When we rent the building, we rent it for the entire day. So, it doesn't matter if we have one event, we've rented it for the entire day. So, if you have nine graduations, you rent it, and it's not, the cost is the exact same. We are going to be putting in a new, well, we will be taking a sound system over there, so that people can hear. That was the most embarrassing thing. Every parent wants to hear their child's name as they walk across the stage. And the microphones were going in, they were going out. We couldn't hear, we heard the chattering in the background. We are wanting it to be an extremely exciting event, but we want to send our students off with class. And we've got to stop settling. And we only settle because we didn't know. This is what we were told, but I'm telling you, we have the fund, the schools have the funds. So, parents, board, there is money at those school levels. First thing the parents need to do is meet with the principal. We're going to send them back. Dr. Pitch and Dr. Linkos has done a great job. There's going to be a parent meeting, where the principal is going to share with the Harmon staff, with the Harmon community on Thursday. They've already practiced with them. There's also going to be one at Schlegel, they've already practiced with her also. But we have got to stop not requiring more of our school leaders. Because I'll tell you, there's no, I don't have the budget, I don't have, you've seen it, that mon, that three hundred million dollars has all been budgeted for. There's not a pot of money for Charles Faust. The schools have the money, so we need to make sure. And then, you will also, remember, you voted on the Alavee, so you're going to be able to see it. But we couldn't get the Alavee system in place until the budget was accounted for and approved. So, you'll be getting more. So, you'll be able to go in, type, and see where is it, what's going on with these. And at any time, you can go and sit this, activity funds, that's what you need to ask for, how much is in your activity account? So, I am, I'm not frustrated, because I'm a mover and a shaker, but I don't like it when people play the game of not letting our parents know real reasons. That's not fair to the community, that's not fair to our students, that's not fair at all. So, we have to make hard decisions as school leaders, and we have to understand, it's okay, we are going to celebrate, but we're going to send you off in class. So, that's what, that's what my community comments, I think those were kind of long. But I just want everyone to understand, there's no underhanded, no, we, eleven months, we, parents should have known about this back in June. They should have, because we made the conversations talk. There was only one principal who we were getting clarity on, they're fine. That principal didn't even have any questions for us. It comes, they, no questions at all, but at the end, you don't, you want to act as if you're hiding your hands. We're not hiding our hands anymore. And I told them, if it comes to me, I'm going to expose you, because you have to run your building, and that goes for all departments. Once it gets to me, I handle it. So, I, I'm a certified principal, so I know what that feels like. But we have got to stop passing the buck. We are school leaders. And I know that the board has been getting questions, comments, what's going on, when it, I didn't know, but the leaders knew. And we actually have, as we, the young people say, my daughters let me know, we have receipts. Yes, we keep receipts. So, if they need to see them, they are receipts. Lisa Garcia conversed with them, she's like, oh, my gosh, you put my name in it. She conversed with them. It's like, no, don't tell my name. She conversed with them, Dr., Mr. Covington, convert, everyone was talking with them. They knew this. This is not a surprise. So, I just wanted the board and the community to know that we're not just picking on people and trying to get them to do things, we are really wanting to make it better. And that's where we are. We are wanting to make it better.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay. As far as my communications, I, on this past Saturday, August the 24th, I went to the legislative meeting of KASB in Topeka, Kansas, and was there most of the day. The purpose was for them to be able to share information where we are legislatively in identifying various issues. And we were looking at the adopted resolutions and policies and priority federal issues of 2019. Some of the concerns that they had, that we discussed, and we're going to follow up with, is reaching, making sure our students are reaching success standards, involvement with community and parent engagement. We talked about the 2020 census that's coming up with counting, because some of the issues came up with undocumented people who are here within the city. One of the major things that I learned about was vaping. I heard about it, but we went into detail, talking about how it is being used, using what they call Juul, and it looks like a flash drive disc, where they can just plug it into the computer. And in that one apparatus, it holds enough nicotine that would be within a pack of sixty cigarettes. And our youth are using this. And so, that's one of the concerns they want to address. We also talked about school safety and bullying, and then the SPED funding. And we're going to come back and meet again in November, as well as December. And I was very much educated on a lot of the things that were there, because we want to get involved with active engagement within the cities, to make sure we choose quality educators and staff, and make sure we focus on equity for all of our students. And so, it was very informing. And so, now we'll have a board report, if anyone?
Yeah. Friday, I, I'm a member of the children's cabinet, and had an opportunity to speak to two of our staff people that were there. What, Dr. Faust, I'd like to share with you, and I'm sure they're sharing, that there may be more funding opportunities that have not been through the traditional departments, but like Department of Health and Environment may have opportunities. So, we need to be aware of that. And then, in the afternoon, attended the KASB board orientation. And then on Saturday, and I hope, and I'll piggyback on your comments, Dr. Faust, we were alerted to the Thirty Americans Art Exhibit at the Nelson Art Gallery. And I sure hope, I don't know, but I sure hope some of our students had the opportunity to spend some of the activity money and go to see this exhibit. It was, it was here from June 1, August 25th, but I don't know. Hopefully, in the future, and it didn't have to be art students, but it's just, just a total cultural experience that could have been, could enhance the experience of some of our students. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, so, I did want to say that there was a person, Douglas Walker, Sr. Some of you may have known him through Saturday Academy, who passed away suddenly. So, I did want to thank those who shared that information. I know they had grievance counselors on hand for some students. He picked up my daughter on Wednesdays, so we talked through what, what happens when a drunk driver is not conscious, and why it's important to be aware of your surroundings, and that sometimes people make bad decisions. So, I just wanted to, us to think about Douglas Walker, because he contributed so much to us in here in Kansas City, Kansas. Also, I did get a chance to send my questions to Dr. Faust. I did get lots of questions about graduation. And one thing I really appreciate is that when the community has questions, one, I appreciate that they're confident enough to send us questions, because that's how we know what the pulse is for our community. So, I appreciate when I get questions, so that I can direct them to the superintendent, and he handles them accordingly. So, I appreciate you, Dr. Faust, for clarifying information for our parents who had questions, and then to directly reflect them, direct them to their principals, because it is important to plan ahead. As parents, I'm a parent of someone in the, of kids in the district, and they'll have graduation. But one thing I know is, if we know ahead of time to plan ahead for our child's graduation, we will do what's needed to make sure that we're there, our family is there, and that we have a great celebration. So, that's my report. Oh, by the way, it is Black Breastfeeding Week, yay. So, Black Breastfeeding Week is to shed light on black women who are breastfeeding and black families, because black women do have the lowest rates of breastfeeding, less than seventy percent of black women initiate breastfeeding. And we know that support from the community, from childcare workers, as well as families, will help increase that. By breastfeeding, a breastfeeding family is what we call it, we can decrease infant mortality. African-Americans have the highest infant mortality, Wyandotte County, as well as our neighbors, Kansas City, Kansas. Jackson County has, have a high infant mortality rate, as well as maternal mortality. There are many women who pass away after having a baby and during the birth process. And we know that women who are connected with the community through doulas and licensed breastfeeding consultants, we can help get their voice heard. So, again, this is awareness for, or a celebration of how we can help women and support our community to help the systemic things that have been going on. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Dr. Faust sent us a flyer of a community meeting Thursday, August 29th, six to eight at 5327 Parallel Parkway.
Do we know who's hosting it? I didn't see.
I don't see it on the flyer.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will look at our board calendar, and I'm not, it's quite extensive. I'm not going to go through everything, but just to focus on a couple of things. We will resume meeting August 20, I'm sorry, in September the 3rd, we will have the KCKPS Caring for Kids Partnership kickoff at 1:00 PM here at the central office. The ribbon-cutting services for Welborn Elementary School will be on September the 6th at 9:00, 9:30 AM. And then, on September the 7th, is the Central Avenue Parade lineup at 10:00 AM on 19th and Park Drive. And we are just encouraging the board members, as well as those of the central staff, and even within our school district, to be a participant in these things that are coming up. And we will enlighten and let everyone know more about the upcoming events on our district website.
Madam President, there was a question about policy and us getting together to discuss.
Thank you. So.
Do we want to schedule that?
That would be good.
For after a board meeting, or to add on to one of our board meetings, rather than a special meeting?
Is it possible that maybe we can, if Susan, we have board clerks send dates out through email, and then everyone select the time in which we could meet? Is that acceptable? Okay, all right, well, we will do it in that manner. Thank you.
Could I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Greg, were you able to, excuse me, in the board policy said there's an evaluation tool, and there.
I'm not, I'm not aware of a specific tool. They do have a board policy that requires or suggests that the board, I think it does require, actually, an annual evaluation, self-evaluation to be conducted by the board. My understanding is, the board has handled that in different manners in different years. Typically, the self-evaluation is done at a board meeting, or a special meeting, or a board retreat, where the board would go through and either, I think some years, you've had somebody from KASB come in to conduct that evaluation process.
The policy says a tool. So, if that, if the tool doesn't exist.
I don't believe a tool exists that I'm aware of, that the board has specifically adopted.
Something else we need to address.
I know that, for whatever it's worth, I do know other boards have tools that are, that they use for that self-evaluation process. So, that's something you could gather up and take a look at, to see if.
We just need clarification for that language in that policy.
As far as I'm aware, I'm not aware of a specific tool that this board has used, other than sort of having a meeting or retreat to address that.
Thank you.
Also, the Strategic Planning Committee did contact us, and I did get my meeting date, but she indicated that all board members hadn't responded. I want to encourage my fellow board members to.
With Greenville?
With Greenville? Greenway, sorry. I would encourage my other board members to sign up for those strategic planning. From the email, it was only three of us who signed up.
I think we're all covered now.
Oh, great, yay. So, it's just good to see. I just want to make sure that we all had a voice in that strategic planning process.
So, any other comments? With that, may we have a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Needed seconded.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourned our meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's adjourned.